Good morning, everyone. We're going to ask everybody to please settle down. We're going to begin the meeting, the board meeting. At this time, the meeting is called to order. This is our work session meeting, January 28th. It is 9:00 a.m. and meeting is called to order. Would you please stand with me? Recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we recite our Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. Okay, before we go into our strategic planning, I do have a few announcements to make. I want to first of all, welcome, welcome the EDC, Economic Development Council, and partners here with St. Lucy County Public Schools. Very interested in hearing your presentation. Thank you, Pete. Okay, at this time, I just want to make an announcement that Katie Akati is standing in for our administrative assistant, Jennifer Lincoln. And then also, if you notice, we have one board member that is missing, but she will be here soon. She'll be late today, and that's Teresa Arison. And then I want to make an announcement about the Night of the Stars. That's coming up February 1st. Night of the Stars recognize different staff and employees that have been just absolutely stars. We have a section in our regular meeting where we recognize the stars of our system, school system. But Night of the Stars is a big event that's held every year to recognize principals, top principals, teachers, support staff, et cetera. So at this time, we're going to go right into our strategic planning work session, and we'll ask Dr. Prince if you please lead us up in that.
All right, good morning, Chairperson Dr. Mills. I'm so excited to be here today. We've got, I always say, we've got a loaded potato today because we've got a lot of content. We're going to go through, and I'll give you kind of a rundown of what we're going to be talking about today. We've got, the first thing is going to be Classrooms to Careers, which is a big initiative for us with regards to the Economic Development Council and the partnership we have with the business community. The second is an update on where we are with Legacy High School. And students are getting letters. They got letters last week and this week with regards to current ninth and 10th grade students that are sitting in Fort Pierce Central High, or Port St. Lucie High, or Treasure Coast High, and what their options are and deadlines that they have to meet if they are going to be staying at those schools, or if they're going to choose to go to their new zone school, which is Legacy. We also have some students that are, you know, were zoned for, let's say, Central, but are now zoned for Centennial, and those students will have the same options, and they got the same letters as well. So Dr. Wild will be providing that update. Also, we have a very exciting initiative at FK Suite. We will be bringing that principal in. Makita Brohm is going to be presenting to you on something that's really cool. I'm really excited. It has also been discussed probably at the Ed Foundation with regards to their initiatives and the environmental initiatives in the lagoon. And then lastly, we're going to close it out with the greatest chief of schools in Florida, which is Dr. Craig Summer, is going to give you a semester one breakdown on how our data looks, our academics reading and math, and also attendance. He's also going to hit on some stuff with student acceleration, and I'd like you to pay real close attention to that because that is opportunity for students. I always say that opportunity for education should be colorblind. I've got some exciting news to share with regards to some initiatives that have happened. I want to give my predecessor, Mr. Gent, credit here. Mr. Gent arrived in 2015. I was fortunate enough to be his deputy superintendent. So the metrics that we're going to share today are really what has occurred between 2015 and 2022 when, when Mr. Gent was here with our acceleration initiatives, which I was a big part of, but also from '22 to '25 since I've been superintendent. And what I'd like to say that, you know, when you have a strong culture and a strong team, you can move a lot faster. And I'd like to say, the people behind me, we've got the right people in the right seats on the bus, and we are able to accomplish great things because we work so well together. And that also goes for all of our administrative leaders in our school centers. So with that being said, I'm going to kick off the first couple of slides before I introduce a couple of folks from our Economic Development Council. So the first thing I want to add is, why are we doing this? So we have two very important relationships as a public school. One is to our families. Every child deserves quality in a first-class public education regardless of where you live and where you're from. You should have opportunity across this district. And that's number one. We need to provide our parents options, and we also need to provide whatever option that is that those parents take, they need to have a first-class education. The second important relationship you have is with your local business community. The local business community has to have confidence that the public schools are producing high school graduates that can immediately enter the workforce if they are not going to post-secondary college opportunities. And you're going to see both of those things today. I will say that I've been very active with our business community in the Economic Development Council with regards to what industries are here and what industries are we attracting so that the programs in our schools mirror the local needs of our business community. And recently, that focus has been primarily in our high schools. But we are looking to create an awareness earlier and earlier for our children because I'd like to think, actually from my own experience, you know, what do kids want to do when they grow up? And I want to see, or I want to show you what these kids articulated.
When I get older, I want to be a pediatrician.
I want to be a chef when I grow up.
I would like to be a lawyer.
I want to be a zoologist.
In the future, I would be an engineer.
When I grow up, I want to be a veterinarian.
I want to be an accountant when I grow up.
I know that I want to work with animals. And more specifically, I want to protect endangered animals and help protect species from becoming endangered.
I see myself as a pediatric dentist.
A corporate lawyer.
I want to be a marine biologist, and especially like a shark biologist.
Becoming a mechanical engineer.
So for my future career, I aspire to be a robotics engineer.
I want to be a criminal justice lawyer.
In the future, I want to be a pediatric nurse.
Wow, pretty impressive. I heard Mr. Barfield, a corporate lawyer. That sounds like somebody you know. I know Mr. Barfield's daughter is, might be a corporate lawyer. But what's interesting is when you talk to kids, where do they get their inspiration? When you ask children, what do they want to be when they grow up? If you ask the next question, why do you want to do that? It's interesting what you start hearing, and I want to share with the board what some of these students said. And it really is what ignites career interest in a child.
In the future, I want to be a pediatric nurse. My mom always wanted to be a nurse, so my friend's mom works at a nursing facility, so she helped me a lot.
What I see myself doing is becoming a mechanical engineer because that is something that I've always been interested in. My mom and dad put me in courses at IRCE for soldering, coating, mechanics, and I've been interested in that, and I've been excelling at that for a while now.
I want to be a marine biologist, and especially like a shark biologist. Well, ever since I was little, I've been out on the boat, on the water, snorkeling, diving, and me and my dad go spearfishing a lot.
I want to be an accountant when I grow up. My parents have a business that they own, and my dad started taking courses to be an accountant because he wants to start doing like shares and stuff like that. And I was inspired by, like, him doing it.
I want to be a chef when I grow up. My mom inspired me to start doing it because she's, she's really good at making baking food without even having like the cookbook out.
She can cook without even using a cookbook. You know, what was interesting is when we started talking to the students, a lot of them were inspired to do something specific because of their parents. Their parents were in that, their parents did this, or an uncle, or somebody did something that was of interest to them. And I always ask the question that if, if you're not afforded, I go back to my own experience as a child, and I didn't see my parents that often because they were always working. And, and how do you get inspiration when you don't necessarily have the influences of your parents? Your parents love you, and they'll do anything for you. In fact, they're going to work four jobs to make sure that there's food on the table and that there's a roof on your head. But who is going to provide that awareness? Who's going to provide that exploration? Who's going to provide the experience for our kids to make sure that they know what's out there, that the only thing that they don't aspire to be is a YouTuber? Because that's what they're on, their phone all day. You know, what is out there? So, you know, I think you're going to see a common theme today from us, and that is we are going to advocate for kids. We are going to advocate for all children, and we're going to provide opportunity to all children. And that starts younger and younger, and we want to start it in elementary school. And we want to provide awareness to our kids so that they know what kind of jobs are out there. And then as they get older, include our business partners in that process so they can work with us to make sure that we're meeting our local needs of our local economy with our local graduates. So these are the goals. The Halfpenny Renewal, thank goodness, because we've got about $300 million in projects that are currently underway, along with millions of dollars in local projects. I want to thank the board members that were at the cast ribbon cutting for the cafeteria. What a great event that was, and Jane Whittaker did a wonderful job. Also, the Phase One with regards to the opening of Legacy High. I'm very excited about that, and we are going to share with the board an update on that. And the third thing is increasing acceleration. Dr. Summer is going to provide an update on that. Acceleration is not just college courses and algebra and geometry and AMP, which is accelerated math. It's also career and technical education courses, and Dr. Wild is going to cover that in hers as well. But first, we're going to be kicking off Classrooms to Careers. Dr. Wild is going to be presenting for us today, and our deputy superintendent, Dr. Wild. I'm going to turn it over to you. And welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, board members. Madam Chair, Superintendent Prince, I'm very excited to be here and share several topics with you this morning. First, we are going to talk about Classroom to Careers, and I want to direct your attention to that wonderful pop-up banner next to the screen that was produced by the Communications Department that gives a really nice overview of Classroom to Careers. And this is an initiative that we have started this year for full implementation next year. And we're going to review how it came to be and what exactly it is. We had mentioned earlier that we were taking a trip to go to Bowling Green, Kentucky, to learn about what they were doing with their community, a partnership between the school district and the chamber and the Economic Development Council in Bowling Green. And it was a great visit, a great opportunity to spend time with the EDC and other community members about what K-12 career awareness and career education could look like if a partnership is developed and is strong. And so we already have a longstanding, strong partnership with the EDC, so we are already halfway there and really excited to be able to put this together. So today, we do have Pete Tesh, the EDC president. We have Azlina Goldstein, the EDC chair. We have Robert Barfield, the EDC chair-elect, as well as Anita Fisher, the EDC Workforce Readiness Staff. And I'd like them to come up, and they're going to say a few words. I think we're starting with Azlina Goldstein.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wild. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair Dr. Mills. Good morning, board members. So first, I want to thank you for having us here this morning and inviting the EDC to participate in this very important discussion. On behalf of the EDC and its board, we express our heartfelt gratitude to the school board for their unwavering commitment to education and to Dr. Prince for inviting us to explore how we can elevate our collaboration to the next level. It is the collective efforts of the school board, staff, the business community, and leaders that will elevate our students and propel our community forward. But before I continue with what I'd like to discuss today, I'd like to start off with an inspirational quote, and that is from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." This quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. beautifully captures the essence of what true education should strive to achieve. Education is one of the most effective ways to help people adopt new mindsets and perspectives in order to solve problems more effectively. But we must realize that intelligence alone is insufficient. Proper education seeks intelligence as well as character, so we must make sure that we do not neglect the latter. It is with this profound understanding of the role education plays in shaping both intellect and character, we recognize the immense opportunity and responsibility you have as a school board and we have as business and industry leaders to influence the future of our community. Accordingly, we are very excited about this Classrooms to Careers initiative, and we're anxious to get even more involved in connecting the world of the classroom to the world of work. We are very appreciative of Dr. Prince's and the school board's willingness and enthusiasm in working with the EDC and helping us find our students and residents quality jobs. In fact, as you certainly may know, Dr. Prince is on our EDC's executive committee and is a staunch advocate for job creation and career and technical education. EDC's mission is to help create high-wage, high-scale jobs in St. Lucy County by the relocation and expansion of target industries. Providing for the talent and training needs of local industry has been a high priority of our organization for several years. St. Lucy County, as we all know, has experienced significant economic growth and job creation, but without a skilled workforce to support this expansion, businesses will struggle to grow and meet demand. Our collaborative Classrooms to Careers initiative aims to bridge this gap by preparing our students from elementary school through high school to transition seamlessly into successful career paths, whether they choose to focus on a specialized college curriculum or enter straight into the workforce. There is no better time than now to embark on this Classrooms to Careers initiative in order to build upon the recent success of St. Lucy Public Schools being ranked number one on the Treasure Coast for college and career readiness. The percentage of your students who earned an industry certification has surpassed those in Martin, Indian River, and Okeechobee counties. So I want to applaud you all and celebrate that recognition that our St. Lucy Public Schools students are graduating with college credits and workforce-ready credentials. This is extremely important for the new and expanding businesses and industries that the EDC is helping secure for our county. The EDC is uniquely positioned to be that bridge that connects the business community and the school district. We facilitate collaboration between the school system and industries that need that educated workforce. Just last year, the EDC's 2024 initiatives and ventures were guided by our May Strategic Doing Workshop. Our EDC Board of Directors and a number of special invited guests envisioned the EDC's future and discussed the most important ways the EDC Board's unique assets could grow our effectiveness as the community's thought leader and champion for quality jobs, bolster our advocacy for workforce readiness, affordable housing, and improved infrastructure. While the end results of this effort will be years in the making, we are committed to getting things done. We are not only the Economic Development Council of St. Lucy County, we are the Economic Doing Council of the Can Do County. So as a result of our Strategic Doing Initiative, we learned about one of the most innovative workforce models in the nation. And as Dr. Wild touched upon, it was called SCK Launch. That's an acronym for learning about unique and new careers here. It is with the EDC staff, your St. Lucy Public Schools leadership, and many EDC board members. We made trips to Bowling Green, Kentucky to learn about the regional chamber's highly-regarded SCK Launch Workforce Readiness Program. From elementary school through high school, the South Central Kentucky Schools, strongly supported by the business community, build soft skills, leadership skills, and focus on career training for the region's students. We witnessed the positive impacts that the Workforce Readiness Program had. We also experienced firsthand the positive impacts that their intentional incorporation of teaching those character-building and leadership traits into their program had on the students and the business community. So now, the EDC and St. Lucy Public Schools with Dr. Prince were working closely together to create a similar Classrooms to Careers initiative readiness focus for 2025. Our goal is to ensure that our students not only excel academically, but are also innovative and thrive in their chosen career paths. So while we at the EDC call upon our business community and leaders to get involved because these students will be our future workforce, we encourage the school board to continue your unwavering support in education, but also to support the Classroom to Careers initiatives with that Dr. Prince and Dr. Wild are about to share with you. So let's work together to support and nurture the growth of our students, to ensure that St. Lucy County continues to thrive economically and socially. Our continued collaboration is crucial in shaping the future of our students and the economic prosperity of our community. And with that, I will lead this to our illustrious doctor, or sorry, almost doctor, sorry, Mr. Tesh.
Doctor without honors. Thank you, Azlina. That was very passionate and articulate. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Prince, absolutely delighted to be here. We get a lot of calls when Dr. Prince or Azlina makes presentations at our EDC events. They'll say, "I don't want to go after Dr. Prince. He's such a great speaker." And just like Azlina, I don't want to go after her. So I got a double whammy here. So we appreciate your time, and most importantly, we're absolutely delighted about this partnership because this is the, the future of St. Lucy County. Just, just a couple of brief remarks because I want Anita Fisher to talk about what we're actually doing right now with you all and with the great staff that you have. We're actually implementing all the things that Dr. Wild's going to talk about in Classroom to Careers. So I just want to say that, as, as Lina mentioned, EDC has long been an advocate for workforce readiness, talent, training, and all the interfaces that we have with our business community. You know, way back in 2017, we started the Skills Gap Study. We started that, and many of you remember the Treasure Coast Skills Gap Study, 2017, 2019, 2021. We're actually doing the 2024 refresh. We're calling it the refresh because we've bothered our key industry leaders so many times that we're just going back to talk to them, and Azlina's going to talk about the 30 companies that she has visited and talked to. But it's really important to break out those studies because even way back when, when we're looking at structural issues that impact our businesses in terms of hiring individuals, all those same issues are still there in terms of trying to manage that gap between the correct skills, the attitudes, the work ethic, and working with these growth industries that we saw, all those beautiful young people and their aspirations. Pat Johant was, was the author of that study, and she asked a real hard-hitting but simple question, and that is, who's responsible for training the people in our workforce? You know, way back when, you know, when I was in school, it's like, okay, well, education is. Well, that's different now, primarily because of the post-pandemic economy and what happened with COVID. Also, with economic and social norms being changed, we have to take a different approach. We have to take a private sector approach to working together to help make sure that we maximize the opportunities for our young people. So it's like, who's responsible? Well, we're all responsible, and that's why we're here today. Pat also talked about the last mile. Now, St. Lucy Public Schools and our other partners have been doing a great job of readying our young people for our careers. But Pat noticed that there was this last mile drop. Once the, the students had graduated from high school and they were looking for careers locally, it kind of fell through the cracks. There wasn't that connection between, as, as Lina said, the world of the classroom and world of work. So we think this is a very apt title, Classroom to Career. So we want to connect that last mile and make sure that our students have all the opportunities and know of all the options available for them here with our industries. Also, Pat talked about how do we, how do we get our employers more engaged? You know, a lot of times, we weren't ready, or we didn't have an effective delivery system. But now we do. And I always accuse some of our employers of being kind of run and gun. It's like, okay, well, you tell us all the things that you need, and then you leave. But now we have our act together as we are here today. So we're telling our employers, we, and you'll hear from Anita about this, how we have an effective delivery system to work together, so we want our employers at the table. So Pat talked about meeting in the middle and trying to aspire to a 50/50 partnership between education and business. And then the last thing that's very important is the marketing and outreach. As Lina mentioned, SCK Launch, and that's where we found out about what Bowling Green, Kentucky was doing in a very effective manner, how they were working business, education, government to make sure that they had a skilled workforce. You know, it's interesting, state of Kentucky's like four or five million people, state of Florida, 23 million. Bowling Green is 75,000 people. Thirty-five percent of their workforce is in manufacturing. They must all work together. And the Bowling Green Chamber was the conduit for making things happen between education, community partners, and industry. So you think about those things. Who's responsible? The last mile, meeting employers, and education in the middle. And then also, the effect of having a comprehensive marketing strategy. This is all the things that we aspire to do. So how do we do that? Well, we've been working at this for a while, and we think that the best way of doing this is forming a separate 501(c)(3) corporation. So as a result of what Azlina mentioned about the Strategic Doing Initiative and what we saw in Bowling Green, we formed the Treasure Coast Center for Educational and Economic Development. And there's two real clear reasons for that. One is working hand-in-hand, shoulder-to-shoulder with the EDC and St. Lucy Public Schools. This 501(c)(3) will be the conduit for all the things that we're talking about. The EDC has a unique relationship in the business community in that we, we've helped bring these companies in, and you know them all, and we also have been keeping them here. So we have a, a unique ability to go in and work with the companies. They listen to us. And now that we have And now that we have the school board involved, they're listening to us even more. So that unique relationship that we have with industry and then also having a 501(c)(3) that allows us to access private foundations, philanthropic organizations, and grants, working together makes that happen. So we're excited about this, and we think that this is the proper and most effective way of doing that. So that's ready to launch, but I'd like Anita to talk about, one, what she's done with our existing companies, very quickly about what she found. She visited 30 key employers. And then what we're doing now with Alicia Sites and Career and Technical Education and all the various initiatives that are ready to launch right now. So it's a very exciting time. Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate the time here. And Anita, tell us how we're getting things done.
Thank you, Pete. Thanks, Azlena. I'm so excited to follow behind everyone this morning. So thank you for having me. Good morning. My name is Anita Fisher. I am the Director of Workforce Readiness with the EDC. And I'm excited to talk about what we're doing currently with Dr. Prince, Dr. Wild, Alicia Sites, our CTE Director. And the following objectives have been formally formed to execute the goal of TCC and are now ongoing in what we've been doing in the last year. So working with CTE and St. Lucie Public Schools, obviously, K-12 collaboration. We are so excited in the last year that I actually was a loaned executive to the EDC with Project Lift. So we got to actually see what it was like to be working in the field with our kids, right? We got to see what it was like to have that excitement of them wanting to go to work. Some kids are just not ready to go to college, and some kids are just excited to get to work. But how do we do that? And we were able to work together to make sure that our business partners and our school district was like, hey, we're on board. Let's do this. So I was very excited to get out, talk to our business partners, and find out what they needed, what they needed not only from us, from the schools, from our nonprofits, from our community partners. How did we, where do we go? And what do we do? And how do we do it better? So that's really what I went in there to do. And what I found out was that they're willing to take someone without the skill set needed that day to start the job. They're willing to take someone who just has a great mindset, who has some soft skills, who has some leadership skills, who's going to show up on time. And we were excited to say, okay, so now what do we do? So we're excited about that opportunity. Last year, we started with our industry tours, and we had two business partners arrive. And that was me begging and pleading with them to come and just show up for me. It was my first time doing it, right? This year, this month, we tripled that number, probably more than that. But there was over 40 business partners at our Lunch and Learn this month. And what those business partners are doing is they're going in, they're listening to what the Classroom to Careers initiative is going to be and how they can get involved. And they're touring our CTE programs. So they're seeing what the students are doing, which is so exciting because now they get it. They're like, oh, oh, this is huge. This is exciting, right? So we're very excited that the business partners are not only involved, but they're ready to get to work. We had our very own intern speak at that event. She went from a 16-year-old at our last career fair last year, shy, introvert. She was unsure of herself, but she's super, super smart. And she spoke eloquently in front of 40 business partners and in front of her teachers, in front of her principal, her vice principal. It was incredible what she was able to do in such a short amount of time. She's 17 years old, she's a senior, but she's our intern, and she's done incredible things. And she's taught us incredible things. So our goal is to get out there and to provide more internships this summer with our business partners while we partner with them. And to be able to do that is just incredible, and that they're seeing that there's results and that they should be a part of this. We already have the existing relationships with the business partners. We're already working with St. Lucie Public Schools. We just need to marry them together now. And we are doing that. We are really starting to do that, and we're starting to see what's going to happen in the future, right? It's happening right now in small numbers, but we want to take it to the next level. So we're super excited about this initiative. I was able to go into one of our business partners, Director Shipyards, and we were able to bring all of our community partners together. St. Lucie Public Schools, Career Source, IRSC, United Against Poverty, Boys and Girls Club, Project Lift. And we were able to say, how do we work together? What do we need to do for you? What is missing? What's the skill gap? And how do we fix it? And how do we come together to make it work not only for our students but for our workforce, right? And those community partners, they're doing it. They're working together. That business is working with us. Everyone reaches back out to me as their resource broker, and we're working together to make sure that we're getting them the talent that they need. And if we don't have the talent that they need, we'll make sure that they have the soft skills to get in there and to create the talent that they need. Because these kids want it, and the business partners want it, and we want it, right? So talking about our marketing communications outreach, I know that Pete and Azlena touched on the SCK Launch, but I had the privilege of going out to Bowling Green, I said the privilege, of going out to Bowling Green three times in an eight-week time span. And during that time, we really got to dive in. We got to see how the business partners and the chamber and the schools and the EDCs were working together. We got to see that all. And it was incredible. So the very last time that we went, Alicia, myself, Denise went, we actually got to see an eighth-grade experience. During that eighth-grade experience, what we saw was huge. Those kids were not on their cell phones. Those kids were not standing in a corner on a phone, hanging out with their friends, talking and bored. Those business partners were completely engaged. They were doing the things that those kids needed to learn to do, and they had those kids engaged. I mean, when you can get a bank to engage a child, that's exciting, right? So I want to say that we are going to take this to the next level. We have the tools. We have the right people in place. We are excited to work together, and our business partners are excited to do this with us. The one thing that I gathered from those business partners was that I asked them, why are you here? Why are you doing this? Why an eighth-grade student? And they said, that is our future. They are getting ready to choose their careers in the next few months. And we want to make sure that if they even got a little excitement, that they would choose this career and that we would be there to support them all the next four years while they're making choices to go into the industry that they want to go into, right? So we're very excited to do that, to be a part of that, and to just make sure that we are creating the workforce and helping you partner and create the workforce that we're looking for here. Thank you.
So I want to thank the EDC. First of all, I asked Pete if they could just come in and say a few words, and maybe we just cancel the presentation at that point. That was fantastic. That was a lot more than I expected, but I really appreciate it. Azlena, Anita, Pete, thank you so much. Really, what Helen is going to be presenting is, you know, just a formalization of this relationship that we have with our local business community to make sure that we're meeting those needs. And she's going to articulate what's going to happen at the elementary, middle, and high school level. I'd also like to add too, Anita mentioned the Lunch and Learn. We just had that last week. And I went and spoke, and I said, what to expect? And oh, you know, there's going to be a dozen or so people there. And I walked in, and it was just a packed house. I was like, whoa, this is a lot more folks than I anticipated being here today. And what happens is, we have lunch, and then the business community goes through, and at this particular school, it was Centennial High School, and they go and they see the career and technical education programs at the school. And these are local businesses and employers that go see what's happening in our schools. And Helen actually put some of the students on the spot. It was not expected. She came back, I had to leave a little bit early. I couldn't stay for the whole thing. But Helen said, you know, they had student ambassadors. Why don't you just introduce yourself? And by the way, whenever you surprise kids, you never know what's going to happen. It could be great, or it could be a total unmitigated disaster. I'd like to say that it was great because the students, there were half a dozen ambassadors, and they went and talked about all of the certifications that they had for allied health or auto mechanic or all these different things that the students were working on. And it was really, really impressive, and it was completely unexpected. And I'm glad that the students articulated so well because that's what this is about is students interfacing with business and having also the soft skills and the confidence to talk about what they're doing and why they're doing it. So, Dr. Wild, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Now, I'm the one who doesn't want to go next. That was fantastic. Thank you so much. And they really did go over a lot of the details and really helped bring this partnership to life. I'm going to talk a little bit about how we implement this within the school district to continue this work. And... One second. This is not... Okay. So as they were discussing, when we went to Bowling Green, what we discovered is a lot of the things they were doing, we were doing, or we were doing something different, but similar. And we're going to be able to build on what we're successfully doing and expand it through this partnership. As was alluded to in their presentation, we have a very successful track with industry certifications. So on the screen, we're just reminding our audience of our three-year trend in industry certifications. It is amazing. And when Dr. Prince mentioned those students standing up, each one of them listed multiple industry certifications that they had earned and why, and what they're going to do with them. It was extremely impressive, and it was across a range of different curriculum and career pathways. So Classroom to Careers is going to begin in elementary. And in St. Lucie Public Schools, we're extremely strong in career technical education and college readiness at the high school level. But our elementary and middle school is more spotty and less strategic and purposeful. And we're going to change that and make sure that we have a seamless K-12 pathway through this, all the way from awareness, exploration, experience, to working hopefully in the St. Lucie community. So our goal is to create this intentional pathway and graduate students ready to go into the workforce with all the skills that they need, those soft skills that were mentioned, as well as academic content and career technical education. We're going to build on what we already do well. The industry certifications, our pre-apprenticeships, Zello, which is our career exploration program portfolio that we use, we use it very heavily in eighth and ninth grade. We're going to expand that use. Play with Purpose, which we have talked about before, and our new career fair initiative that we do with the EDC, we're going to continue that with 11th and 12th grade. And as Anita was sharing, that really does take the commitment of our business and industry We are number one on the Treasure Coast, as Azlena celebrated. And just a reminder, we have so many different CTE programs across the district, and so I've just listed them here for the audience and for future reference, including the new programs scheduled to open at Legacy High School in Tradition. We have all of these programs. We have 10 pre-apprenticeship programs for students that are 16 and older that help them get the skills that are needed in today's workforce in these programs. They require that we partner with apprenticeship programs, and the 10 programs are listed here. These are all just reminders. To revisit the student career fairs that we started, we did do two very large career fairs for our juniors and seniors. We had over 800 students participate this first time and over 80 businesses. And that is a lot to ask of a business. They're giving up pretty much a full day of those representatives being able to be at their work sites to work with our students. It was a combination of, this is what you can do in your future, whether you go to college or straight into the workforce. These are the type of opportunities that are here for you in St. Lucie County. But also, there were some of them that were doing job interviews and hiring right on the spot. Play with Purpose. In case anyone is not familiar with it, this is our kindergarten curriculum program that we added a number of years back to allow kindergarten students that time to play. A lot of schools had moved away from actual play in kindergarten, and we wanted to bring that back in a big way. And they're all theme-based modules, and they're all career-related. So it's a great way for our students in kindergarten to begin to learn to work together, those soft skills, as well as start to learn some terminology and think about, in, at the developmentally appropriate way, careers. You may have seen this at other events, but we're going to talk now about Zello and our expansion of the use of Zello.
So Zello is a platform where students can go in and take a self-assessment. And within that self-assessment, they'll ask them, what are they interested in? What kind of things do they like? And then based on the results of that assessment, Zello will give them possible career opportunities that they can explore.
Now, that is a teacher that works currently in a middle school. So this part of the presentation is going to be very specific to Zello and what the program does because we thought it was important that you, as well as our EDC partners, get a chance to really take a look at it. So it does teach our students to discover what they like to do, what they're good at, to really start thinking about that. And it is definitely age-appropriate, and it begins to build a portfolio for them as they are beginning to become more aware of the different careers that are out there and get ready for those careers. It's also a college exploration program as well. We are, next year, going to expand it to elementary schools. And so I wanted to show you a little bit about what it looks like and how it changes over the years for the students. So this is an introduction to what the K-2 lessons look like for our students. And I will say that I had Sammy Zarallo have her little boys log on to this program, and they absolutely were riveted and engaged with the program.
Future readiness can start at any age, and getting a head start on developing the personal strengths and interests of your students is critical in fostering their successful futures. With Zello K2, students discover a variety of careers in their clusters, develop their problem-solving and community-building skills, and gain a better sense of self. Students go on a mystery adventure around Career Town to help Detective Jill find missing workers who Ernestine McNohire has lured away to build her own community on the move. Their journey begins at the Detective Academy, where students set up their avatars and are introduced to the D-pad, which houses their game progress and achievements. Once their profile is complete, students begin exploring by choosing any of the six locations to start. Each location represents one of six career clusters: Helping, Nature, Health, Fixing and Building, Business, and Creative. Students learn how every cluster has multiple careers that each contribute to the community. When they first enter a location, students encounter someone who works there and find out about their career. For example, in the Nature career path, students visit a farm where they meet Farmer Miguel. They learn that farmers raise animals and grow crops for the community. They also learn about two missing workers in that location and what they do. Students explore each career path by playing a fun mini-game in every location. The mini-games are a great way for students to develop decision-making as well as time and task management skills that set the foundation to be future-ready. Once completed, they're rewarded with a sticker, badge, and a clue of Ernestine's whereabouts. Detective Jill then quizzes students on the careers they've encountered in that location and guides them through reflection questions that boost their confidence and sense of self. Students keep track of their progress by visiting their D-pad, where they save the careers that interest them, view their self-reflection answers, and the badges they've earned. With six possible game outcomes, students can go back and play as often as they want, and no spoilers for students who finish later than others. Getting students to be future-focused is fun and engaging with Zello K2. It's also an easy way for you to keep track of your students' goals and interests by viewing them in your educator tools. This way, you're even better equipped to support your students. Supplementary activities are available for educators to build and extend their students' Supplementary activities are available for educators to build and extend their students' learning outside of Zello. The activities are broken down into recommended grades, making it easier to implement into the classroom. With Zello K2, you're helping students develop the confidence and ambition to succeed, helping them build career awareness and provide them with the building blocks to kickstart their successful tomorrow.
Okay. So, you can see how engaging that would be for, for our young people. It does talk about all of the vocabulary that students learn in the program. So, we just had a little Wordle here to show you all those. Okay. I'm going to just show you a brief snippet of grades three through five so you can just see how it progresses and how it gets a little bit more mature as they move through the grades.
Future readiness can start at any age, and Zello offers a unique experience for students in grades three to five, giving them a head start on building self-knowledge, learning about their options, setting goals, and developing the skills they need to be future-ready. Kids are always discovering new things about the world and themselves. About Me helps them understand who they are, what makes them unique, and how to use this knowledge as a starting point to imagine a future for themselves. Students examine a list of interests and choose their favorites, or they can opt to add their own unique likes. By identifying their skills and selecting their level of confidence, students learn they can build and develop new skills over time. Creating a bridge between school and future opportunities begins with students identifying their favorite subjects and what they like about them. Part of building self-confidence is acknowledging and celebrating achievements. Students are guided...
Okay, I'm going to cut that one short for the sake of time, but I did want you to see how it changes over time. One of the things that our curriculum department is very conscious of is the fact that using this program is also extending their English language arts skills. They are speaking, listening, and writing like almost any type of content helps to support. So, we have brought out the alignment there. So, we are going to begin the training for Zello this year, February 5th. We do, we have the media specialists coming together because the Media Center is a great time for students to interact with Zello. Then, the media specialist can support that through encouraging and pulling book selections to make that tie to English language arts. By the end of 2024, 25, we are going to introduce the students to it. They're going to start to play with it, create their avatars in kindergarten one and two, and then in three through five, begin to create the interest. And you got the idea in that second video of what that portfolio begins to look like as it collects the students' information, as it, as the student grows and develops and learns new things and changes their interest. The elementary school counselors are going to be trained as well as the ESC school-based specialist because there are robust reporting functions within the program. So, they can stay updated on what the students are doing within the program, and we want to make sure that they feel very confident with those tools before full implementation next year. Zello is already in our middle schools and our high schools, as, as you know. And these are the people that are responsible for it and have been trained on it within the various grade levels so that it is part of the scope and sequence in those courses in those grades. And this is just a visual of what the scope and sequence looks like. It, it does outline for all of our educators and counselors and students what they are required to do each year as they progress in building their own portfolio and their interests in grade six through 12. And middle school students also do that About Me lesson at a more advanced level, and they start to, to build a more sophisticated career and college portfolio. And they do a matchmaker, which starts to match their likes and dislikes to careers. In high school, they also do the matchmaker. So, the point here is that what you liked in sixth grade is going to change. You're going to have, be exposed to new things. You're never, it's not static. It changes over time. And the students do have required lessons. And one of the things I want to point out with 11th and 12th grade is that Zello helps support them in creating a resume. So, what's stored in the program can then be transferred into a resume. And our students did use it for the career fairs that they attended. They use it for the HBCU and all these events where they get to interact with either college recruiters or business and industry. And when we had the learn and lunch the other day, the EDC intern shared that, that that's what she used to, to help produce her resume, to get her that internship. And then, in high school, there's also a corresponding scope and sequence for the curriculum. We talked already about the career fair that we did last year. Plans have been long underway for this year's career fair. I'd like to invite you to attend or anyone in the audience. It is April 8th and April 22nd. The north one is April 8th for those schools listed, and the south one is at the Mid-Florida Center for those schools.
The next step is for them to explore. So, I think that's really amazing about Zello is that they can explore all of the possibilities that are there. And then, they can kind of look towards the future, like what do I need to complete in middle school now to prepare myself for what's after high school?
So, Ms. Edwards, you can tell she's very enthusiastic about the program. I do want to tell you that this is not our first career exploration portfolio program. Some of you were here way back when we, we were the first district in Florida to implement Naviance. And our educators were excited to have that program, but we have not seen the level of excitement ever before until Zello. It is user-friendly for our teachers and our students. The engagement is higher, and we've gotten all positive feedback on this program. So, in summary, Classroom to Careers is beginning now, building off of our success, and it will be one of Dr. Prince's proposed superintendent goals for next year. Did you want to add anything?
No, I just wanted to appreciate, once again, the EDC for being here and being such a great partner with us. You know, I always go back to, you know, we're one of the highest-performing districts in the state when it comes to career and technical education and overall acceleration. You know, it's one of those things, we don't have to do this, but it's, it's what we need to do to make sure that we are working with our local business community and providing graduates that are ready to enter the workforce. And also, we talk, and I talk to Pete and Azlina, the chair, a lot about making sure everybody has skin in the game. You know, it's, it's one thing to, you know, say, "I want this at the school district," and "I want this at the school district," and "we need to have these programs in our high schools." But also, the business community, you know, with this initiative has skin in the game. They are participating in these eighth-grade explorations. They are participating in these college fairs. They're, they're meeting us halfway and letting us know, "These are the things I need from our employers," and, and we're working with them. What are the qualifications that you need, like the, the certifications? But also, what are the qualities that you're looking for in your employees? When we talk about work ethic, some of the soft skills, you know, the, the ability to work with a team of people, those are the kind of things that we really need to work on with our students in a very, I would say, isolating era. We're post-COVID. You know, we've got kids that are glued to their phones, and, you know, how do we, in our public school system, encourage our students to be working together? And what does that teamwork look like? Because those are the skills we all know that, that people have to be successful with to be successful in the workforce. So, I would ask the board if they have any questions to me or Dr. Wild...
The next up.
Before we pivot into Legacy.
Board members, are there any questions, any discussion on what we've heard? I will start out to say thank you as well to EDC and Council, and your presentations were excellent. But more importantly, I'm just so glad that we have a working on bridging that gap. You know, because our children, they, we give them a strong education, but we haven't had that, that connection with our community businesses in which we can transfer them to continue once they graduate. I love the idea about the internships during the summer where they can get introduced to these businesses. They can work for them. The businesses can get to know them, and then they can possibly have that job as soon as they graduate and even after school starting. So, that's an exceptional idea that I'm glad that we are working on with the district and EDC partnership. Also, I wanted to say something about the soft skills. I'm really big on character-building skills. I have an after-school program. I see how the children come in and they, they want to be glued to their phones, but we've all taken phones away now because we couldn't get their attention at all without the phone, even at home with our children. I went bowling with my kids last week, actually, Sunday evening, and my eighth grader, who is an honest student, wanted to stay on the phone the whole time we were bowling. And it was like, "Oh, no. No, 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 no. You're going to put that phone up and you're going to enjoy the family, and we're going to bowl together and have a lot of fun and watch each other and encourage each other, you know, and support each other and cheer each other on." But these are skills that our children really need now, more than ever before. And, and also, just being able to do interviews, being able to talk to people and look at them when they're talking to them, you know, and greet people. They come in and they're coming into an after-school program, and they're not speaking. And that is not helping them later on in life. So, to take time out to really teach the, the social skills is extremely important. It's about the whole child, and, and therefore, they can be much, even the point of just being on time. I mean, these things are extremely important, but if we don't teach them to our children and, and the parents, the other thing about the, the children on video, the parents, they, they really watch the parents and what their parents are doing and want to implement that. But if they, if they have parents that are working all the time where they can't really, they don't even know what their parents do at some of the time, but for the school district to pick up that, that slack and give them the opportunity and the exposure of wanting to be a part of something. I was talking earlier with one of our people here and found out that he has a farm, and his children have grown up in the farm among animals and horses and chickens and taking care of them and so forth. And, and now that they're adults, many of them, the, the children, they want to do that, you know? So, just to have that exposure, other kids like the inner-city children, they've never been to a farm. They've never had that exposure. So, what do we expect them to grow up to be? So, thank you so much, EDC. And again, board members, if you have anything to say, any questions? We have EDC here. We have our, our Dr. Helen and others here. Now's the time would be if you haven't written down anything and you want to make any comments.
Madam Chair, I do, I would like to, to say something in regards to Project Lift. I have been following Project Lift, and I think that's an amazing program. I watch the kids. I see the excitement. I see the, where they go, what they do, you know? So, I, that really, you know, I, I thank you for that, Project Lift. We talked about the, well, we talked about the, the soft skills and that the kids do want it. I think that's what you said. I don't know why this is ringing, that the kids want it. And you said the kids, have the kids engage and, and the tools. And I think that's what Project Lift is all about. They are engaged, and you are giving them the tools, and you are giving them the experience. And I do believe that when they leave Project Lift, that they, they are leaving with a certificate. I do believe it's an internship to get, you know? So, when I saw that, I immediately jumped on board and I started to follow anything that comes up on Project Lift. I'm, I'm right behind you, so, I'm behind you with that. There were lots of other, the future, you said that their future, that this is our future, and, and you are excited, and they would choose, that they would choose this career. So, you're putting in place, you're giving them the, the, the wherewithal, what they need, and they are excited. They are choosing this. It's not something you're choosing for them. They are choosing it because you're giving them all of these different, I want to say, different meals, different things you're setting before them, and they are choosing, and that's why they are excited, you know? So, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm, I'm there. Thank you so very much.
Regarding this? Okay.
No, thank you.
We'll move on then.
All right. Thank you for coming. We so appreciate our partnership. Okay, we're going to move to...
Can we just give them a hand clap?
Sure. Okay, the next topic on the agenda is very brief, an update of where we are with the high school student assignment process. Thank you. And I'm going to jump right into it. Okay. I think Dr. Prince did already mention this, that we have sent the initial notification letters out to current ninth and 10th graders that are sitting in our existing other high schools who are now zoned for Legacy High School or any of the very small areas where they're zoned for a different high school. That initial letter was sent out January 17th, and it did explain the new assignment for their child as well as how to opt out if they do want to make the decision to stay at their current school. That same day, the superintendent sent a school messenger in his voice to the parents to further explain and to make sure they were looking for that letter to arrive. Then, a week later, on January 24th, we sent another letter. We, we do not want anyone to miss this news about their child. So, we sent another letter reminding them of the timeline and the process. And in that letter, we also encouraged them to review the curriculum offerings at their newly-assigned school and compare it to the program that their current, that their child is currently in. Because remember, we're talking about current ninth and 10th grade high school students. And just look to see if the new assignment has a program that either aligns to what they're already in or what they're interested in being a part of. And again, the superintendent followed up with a message to reinforce that communication. The opt-out period is until January 30th. The reason for setting a deadline at all is because we do need to know how many students are going to go to their new school or opt to stay at their current school. Knowing that is going to help us determine staffing allocations and know how many teachers are needed at each of our high schools, as well as whether or not there's any capacity at any of the affected schools to accept students who might choose to go there through controlled open enrollment. Controlled open enrollment is that process that's in statute where school districts set a time period where parents can apply to a school if there is room and they can get there themselves with their own transportation, that they could go to a school. So, this is going to allow us to begin to determine where we have capacity because, remember, most of our high schools were way over capacity. And so, we have to see if this is initially going to relieve it or not. And that'll be based on how many students decide to stay or go, in combination with how many new students move into the zone. And so, we'll be working on that so we can be ready for that process in March. If a student after January 30th decides they want to stay at their current school, the student assignment office knows to be flexible with them, and they will still work on it. We just wanted the bulk of those decisions to be made by a date certain so we could make decisions. And we know those letters went out because the student assignment office has been very busy responding to parents and answering those calls and those questions. Our magnet and attractor school applications, those went out after, for anybody that applied by the December 6th initial deadline, they have been notified of their magnet or attractor assignment, and anyone after that will be notified by February 10th. And then, in the summer, we always have a curriculum tran... And then in the summer, we always have a curriculum transfer option for students that might want to go to a different high school for a particular curriculum. And that is on a space-available basis. If there is space at the school and in that program, then the principal can consider accepting that student. That will likely be pretty limited at Legacy as a first-year school with fledgling programs. But we wanted to remind everybody that that is a process that exists for all of our high schools. And great news, the Legacy High School website has gone live. You can go to our website, you can go to where schools are listed and Legacy is now listed. And they have a great new website. They also have their curriculum guide posted. And I'm just going to take a second to take you in and show you the website with Mr. O'Leary's help because it's up on my screen. While he's doing that, positions have been posted. And the administrative staff at Legacy have begun interviewing and offering positions to get ahead of the hiring curve and make sure that people have a chance to have their applications reviewed. This is the new website. You can see their shield is here and it is under construction. It will continue to grow as new information becomes available. But you can see there's a message here from Principal Todd Smith as well as some phenomenal pictures of the development of the school. This always gets people excited to see a new school under construction. They've got their full curriculum guide listed. So we've already had some students who are very well-informed and they are looking to see what the courses will be. We're making them aware of what the career technical education programs are as well as the fact that Legacy High School will have advanced placement. They will have Cambridge ACE and dual enrollment. So students that are in college pathways will be able to continue those if they do move over to Legacy at this time. We have all of their CTE programs listed as well and explaining what the course sequence in those programs will be. And just a reminder, Legacy will not have a senior class. So the programs won't have every single course in the series. But they will have all the first and second year course offerings available. And Mr. O'Leary, do I have to do anything to get it back to the slideshow? Thank you. Okay, and this is just a chart that for your information quickly that you can look at for the Legacy High School CTE programs listed there. One of the things that we just added to the district website is a quick reference guide for being able to see all of the CTE programs on one sheet as well as the college offerings that are at the schools. So parents can go and very quickly compare what is offered at each school. And that is also on our district homepage. So that it's very accessible right now for parents when they're making this decision.
And I wanted to add too, thank you, Dr. Wilde, before we go into questions. So it's kind of cool because I'm also a parent that's impacted by this. My daughter is a current student at St. Lucie West Centennial High. So she is one of the students that received two letters. One letter saying that she's zoned for Legacy and instructions on if she wanted to remain at Centennial, you know, what the parameters for that are. And then we were sending another letter on what the program offerings were. And it was interesting because before that letter got there, she said, you know, Dad, you know, how can I find out what programs are at Legacy? And I'm like, I'm glad you asked that question because you're about to get a letter on that. And the letter that went out kind of described, you know, the... How to look up the programs. And it literally took you to this guide which you have in front of you, which is on our website. And this is kind of a matrix of all of the different programs. Because the kids, you know, you've got kids that are interested in what kind of college pathways do I have? Which what are the, you know, ACE, Cambridge offerings, AP offerings? But also what are the career and technical education programs at my school versus Legacy? And also, a lot of our kids are interested in the military and ROTC. So we wanted to make sure kids are fully informed because quite frankly, you know, we take for granted how savvy our kids are. Our kids, our students are very, very savvy. And, you know, my daughter has, you know, a friend group. And there are some kids that are staying at Centennial. There are some kids that are staying, you know, are going to Legacy. And we're trying to provide options for our families. But we want to make sure that our families are fully informed. So in those letters, there was a QR code where families could scan them and it would take them to this. And also instructions that if they were going to remain at their current school and they could provide transportation, what they needed to do in order to do that. So we're trying to make sure our families are fully informed. And I wanted the board to be fully informed because if you get questions about anything in the coming months, it's going to be about this. Because, you know, you've got students that are moving, students that are staying, parents that don't know, and maybe they didn't read the letter or didn't read it closely. And just refer those questions back to us and we'll reach out and make sure somebody contacts the families to help them. Because we're already, that's already happening with some folks that I know. So any questions for us or Dr. Wilde?
And I did want to add that February 10th is when our eighth graders will get their high school assignments. Their counselors will have all of this information, they always do. But with the addition of a new school, they'll have extra training on it and information available to them. They'll be supporting the eighth graders while they're being transitioned into high school so they fully understand the programs that are available to them.
And Mr. Smith is currently feverishly interviewing.
Yes.
Because he's got to fill his school, so he's doing that today. So Dr. Wilde presented this.
Board member, any questions?
Yes, ma'am, just a few. The letters that are going out are QR codes on them?
QR codes as well as the website. So multiple ways to access the information as well as phone numbers.
Good. What's the projected enrollment? We talked about enrollment, but we haven't heard a number. I mean, we did a couple of months ago.
The eventual projected enrollment is 2,000. For year one, it's 1,500.
1,500 for the first year.
609, 500, 10th, and 411th.
And new boundaries, is that on the website?
It is. And there is, thank you for asking that, I should have said that. The new boundaries are on the website as well as an interactive map for parents to be able to put in their address and find out what zone they're in very quickly.
Thank you.
I guess I have one other question. For the high school, nothing really has changed in terms of the schools that you go to in relation to where you live.
In terms of process?
Where you live, like if I lived in around Fort Pierce Central, that would be the school that I would go to in the past without the boundary change.
Yes, except for the few that we shared at the previous two workshops where we showed you the very specific areas of the map that did change. And then everybody who's in a new zone because of the opening of Legacy. So yes, there is significant change in terms of... There always is when you build a new high school with a new zone. But in terms of the majority of students that live around, especially around a school, no, they haven't changed. So these letters... And that leads me, I should have said, these letters only went to those that are affected by the zone change.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So when will we know, Madam Chairman? So when will we know about controlled choice? When is that? Because I didn't really hear a date. I heard it saying, you know, once we get these letters back and stuff.
It'll be the month of March. You're talking about controlled open enrollment?
Yeah.
Correct, yes, the month of March.
So on the website, does it show on their website what sports are being offered?
Yes, I do believe that was on there. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay.
They will have a full array of sports. They won't have a senior class, but they will have a full array of sports.
Will they have football?
They will.
This accent.
Asking for a friend.
Well, the rumor is that they're not. So, I mean, I've heard that a couple of times and I'm glad you asked that question.
We can research who started that rumor. Yes, they will have all sports.
I have tried, I can't figure it out. Probably some coach that doesn't want to lose their students.
And one more question. The 11th and 12th graders, just to clarify to the community, they automatically can stay at their assigned schools or is there any...
So let me clarify because they're rising into the next year. So this year's current ninth and 10th graders who are moving up to 10th and 11th, they have been assigned to their new school. But both grade levels can opt to stay at their current school through the process that we provided in the letter. So, but seniors, next year's seniors, this year's juniors that are moving into their senior year, they are not being moved at all. They are staying at their current schools.
Okay, so just the seniors are not being moved at all?
Correct. And the next year's 10th and 11th graders are being moved but have the option to stay.
Okay.
Yes.
I have one other question. So I'm looking at this high school program, the reference guide.
Yes.
And I see here where the attractor programs and you have the magnet programs. So I'm going to read what I see here. It says acceptance into a magnet school includes district-wide transportation.
That is correct.
Regardless of address.
That is correct. And the two magnet schools are Fort Pierce Westwood and Lincoln Park Academy.
Right. So the two magnet schools, we only have two magnet high schools.
That's correct.
Which is Lincoln Park and Fort Pierce Westwood. So if I choose to go, if I live in Port St. Lucie and I choose to go to one of those, the transportation is going to be provided for me, for my child?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Okay. And the attractor program, our program student can apply to regardless of address and transportation is provided for them also?
That is correct. And a tractor program is a smaller program within a school. It's not the whole school. So for St. Lucie Public Schools right now, that is Port St. Lucie High School through the arts program, including the building construction program, as well as Fort Pierce Central with the aeronautical engineering program through Embry-Riddle. Those are attractor programs.
Okay, let me ask you, what's the difference between the attractor program and the magnet program?
Magnet program is a whole school designation. And the whole school goes through a magnet school transformation. There's themes involved. In both of those cases, there was also a major revitalization of the school through grants. So we did the Magnet Schools of America grant and transformed the school through that. So Fort Pierce Westwood initially had one single attractor program and that was MOA. But then we expanded it to a school-wide magnet program.
And the attractor program?
Attractor program is just one unique program or several unique programs within a school to draw students to that school for a unique interest. So if a school is... If you recall from previous presentations, we only use those if a school is under-enrolled or under-chosen. And then these programs help to bring students to the school. So that is why you're going to see in our overcrowded schools like Treasure Coast High School, they don't have attractor programs. They do have curriculum transfers if there is a seat available.
Okay, but I'm looking at this and it says the only magnet school, high school that we have there for then is Fort Pierce Central. Even though you say Lincoln Park is one, but I only see two dots here for magnet on the Fort Pierce Westwood.
Sorry, where that is indicated, and we can clarify that, is LPA is the International Baccalaureate. That is their magnet and that has the two stars next to it. So we'll update that tonight so that it's clear. Lincoln Park is a magnet. It's a longstanding magnet school for many, many years now.
Okay, but I'm just going by, if I'm looking at this, it's, you know...
Yes, it's indicated over by International Baccalaureate and we'll put it by LPA's programs as well.
Okay, I see that, okay, over there. All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another question, Ms. Dr. Wilde. I'm going to phrase it in a scenario.
Okay.
If I have a, if there's an eighth grader that's going to ninth grade and they originally could go to either Centennial or Fort Pierce Central. And now that Legacy has come up, that eighth grader automatically is zoned for Legacy? Yes or no?
It depends on their address. So there are Fort Pierce Central students that are absolutely still zoned for Fort Pierce Central. But there is that portion of the map and it is on the website. It's the one that we did in the, when we did the high school zoning presentation. Maybe in October, I'm not sure of the month. Where there is a section of St. Lucie County that it used to be central, that is now Legacy and they will be assigned to Legacy. And the same is true for Centennial. There's a section, the Centennial zone has gotten more concentrated, smaller around the school. And the whole western side of the Centennial zone is now Legacy. And so eighth graders, as they enter their four years, they've never stepped foot in the school, they are going to their new zone school.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, excellent question.
I'm just hoping we're marketing to our competitors really well.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We are.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Wilde.
You're welcome. And I have one more, but you're not going to have to listen to my voice for much longer because I am really excited to introduce one of our esteemed principals. And just want to give you a little lead-in here. You may recall a couple of years ago in a presentation, we talked about some schools that were not, that were under-enrolled. And there's not, there weren't very many, if you recall. One of them was FK Sweet Elementary, FK Sweet Magnet Elementary School, which has been a magnet for a long time. But it, due to all the competition and new schools and, you know, all of our schools being so successful over time, enrollment had gone down and it wasn't getting, didn't have a long waiting list anymore. And so it was not thriving in the way that it used to be. And Dr. Prince moved Ms. Makita Brom to be the principal at FK Sweet. And she shortly thereafter came forward with a proposal that was so well-thought-out that we were super excited. And we asked her to come and share this with you today. And so I am proud to introduce to you Ms. Makita Brom, principal at Fort Pierce Magnet School, to explain her proposal and the concept that we are all super excited about. Makita.
Good morning, Dr. Mills, Mr. Angus Hall, Mrs. Richardson, Ms. Aaronson, Ms. Holly, and Dr. Prince. I'm excited to be here to talk about what we're doing at FK Sweet. So we are doing what's called a magnet school revitalization. And part of why we're doing this, again, we want to recruit, sustain our enrollment at FK Sweet but also increase our enrollment at FK Sweet. And when thinking about that, I had long conversations with my staff. When I say staff, that's everyone, my custodial workers, cafeteria workers, my paraprofessionals, talking to parents and even students of how to recruit more students to the school. Because the traditional academic magnet, like Dr. Wilde said, with more competition now, doesn't recruit as many students as it used to. So in sitting down with my team, we came up with the MOA program, Baby MOA. So as you know, Forest Grove has the preparatory Marina Oceanographic Academy and Fort Pierce Westwood has the MOA program there. And I worked at Fort Pierce Westwood as a coach and as an assistant principal. And even when I worked at LPA, I'm very familiar with FAU Harbor Branch and the MOA program. So when we thought of how can we revitalize our magnet, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. So what could we do to increase opportunities at FK Sweet and at the same time feel a need, feel a need at the district, right? So we came up with this, we were like, let's be the elementary version of the MOA program. So it would, one, complete the feeder path that we have where we would be. MOA Discovery will be our new name. Forest Grove would be the MOA prep program for middle school. And then students could continue on eventually to the MOA program at Fort Pierce Westwood. So in talking about why we called it MOA Discovery... So in talking about why we called it MOA Discovery, when we talk about the plan, thinking about the careers to classrooms, this will be students' first introduction to the Marine and Oceanographic Academy. So we worked on this new, our new logo, which includes, we still have our lions in there because that is quintessential and crucial to the original FK Sweet. And then we have the graduation cap, the microscope, the anchors, all those things that deal with marine and science. That's incorporated into what we do and who we are. And we're keeping our colors, like I said, the red, white, and blue. That's classic to us, but just incorporating the old with the new to create, like again, it's a revitalization of what we're doing. So our program outcomes, we want to increase student knowledge of the Indian River Lagoon. It sits in our background. We have one of the largest estuaries in the United States. I have been learning about this as we're going through this. So the plants and animal species, the impact on our local community. We want to also provide an extended learning beyond the classroom. We want students to have real exposure to the sciences. It's one thing to have science in a book. It's another thing to have science so they can experience it hands-on and to know that this exists in their background. And being where we're at at FK Sweet, so close to the water and the ocean and the lagoon, it provides a perfect opportunity. Also with this hands-on experience, it gives us the rigorous instruction. We want to develop those higher order thinking skills that prepare them for middle school, high school, beyond to join the workforce. We talked about those soft skills earlier and this would do that also. And also increase the science proficiency on state assessments. Our goal is to also always increase student learning. And by increasing student learning, we increase proficiency. So this is really about exposing students to what's really out there. And it'll have that effect of improving everything else around them in the school. So for our curriculum focus, we are, again, the Indian River Lagoon is essential to the FAU Harbor Branch and the MOA academies that we have. So again, having students understand local species, habitat preservation, as well as best practices to reduce known contaminants. Students will learn about sources of pollution and how they can help protect and improve water quality. And then again, we also want to encourage critical thinking skills about sustainability and developing a sense of environmental stewardship. We are, we have a garden on our campus that was established a couple of years ago and we've been working with a local community partner to get kids involved in that. So they, they're starting to understand about growing their own food and what does it look like to grow food and to grow plants and to take care of them. So this program will also be an extension of that also. So what will this look like? So we are going to establish a MOA Discovery Student Ambassador Club. So we'll have students who have that extra interest in it to complete different projects around the school and in the community. This program, Dr. Wild said this about magnets, this is encompassing the whole school. So this will be a K through five initiative. So we're going to integrate different aspects about the lagoon across all content areas in the school. We're going to create a tradition of annual lagoon-based field trips where kids are not only going to different places that deal with the Indian River Lagoon and marine life on the lagoon, but also doing experiments while they're out there. So really incorporating that science aspect to it. Theme-based assignments, each grade level is going to have a quarterly lagoon-based focus on either marine life, plant, invasive species, conservation efforts, and career explorations. And we're also going to do collaborative projects with Forest Grove's MOA Middle School Program and Fort Pierce Westwood's program. So really getting our kids to see what does it look like as they go through the different levels of it and what the potential could be for as they participate in this program. To reach our program goals, we are working on two big things. The first is curriculum creation. So we are working with our school staff, district, and community partners. So starting with my staff, seeing the needs of what we can do for our kids. We are working with district curriculum developers. I have met with Fort Pierce Westwood, their MOA program, Forest Grove. I've met with their principal, their teachers. And then we are also meeting with local scientists. So FAU Harbor Branch, we've met with them to help design our curriculum. We've met with the Florida Wildlife Commission. And we have also met with the Manatee Center and Elise, who runs their education program. So we are bringing in the experts so we can really tailor this curriculum to meet the needs of each student from K through five. And then the other thing we want to do is really create those exciting and hands-on experiences related to the lagoon. So we are working with the Education Foundation on a pretty large grant at this time that's going to focus on having an in-school marine science lab. So we have a building that we can designate for that. Habitat preservation, again, conservation efforts, getting kids out, doing beach cleanups, those types of things. And then field trips for all grade levels where, again, kids experience this. And it's a part of just the, the school culture and the school life at FK Sweet. And these are our current partnerships and we are currently building upon those. So again, the Education Foundation working with us on grants, Fort Pierce Westwood's MOA program, Forest Grove's MOA program, FAU Harbor Branch, the Manatee Center, and of course, our own district specialists are helping us. So that is our program. That is the FK Sweet MOA Discovery Program. And we are scheduled to roll this out the beginning of the next school year.
All right. So I wanted to add a couple of things to this. First of all, we won't be rolling anything out without the board's approval.
My apologies, my apologies. Sorry.
We always, I always, and by the way, I, and I chuckle at that because you ever talk to somebody where it's like, man, I wish I would have thought of that, you know? You know, Makita is, is, if I can articulate the best way with Ms. Brom is, from, from, you know, from such a principal that's just starting, she has a vision for her school. And I always encourage our principals, what is your vision for the school? What do you want your school to be about? And, you know, she's been there for a very short period of time and the school has thrived academically, had, had big gains in her first year there. And she came to us and, and we all know, and we've had conversations about how can we enhance FK Sweet and revitalize the enrollment there and get people excited. And, and, you know, she came to us literally with this idea that was fully articulated. Quite frankly, the presentation you just saw was kind of, in a nutshell, what she presented to us. It was like a fully realized idea of what we can do and the infrastructure. We're not changing anything across the district. The infrastructure, the, the transportation, all that stuff is already there. But what a great idea with regards to, you know, the Forest Grove at MOA and Westwood MOA. It's just a fully realized dynamic and, and she's built all this excitement of what it could be. And we wanted her to present to the board because I think this is a great opportunity for the district. I think it's a great opportunity for FK Sweet. And I'm just so proud of her for her visionary leadership that, that bringing this to us and bringing this to the board today for the boards, you know, to answer any questions and also to get the board's support. Because I do think it's a, it's a truly worthy endeavor, but I, and, and I wanted her to present it herself because it is her vision for what the school can be. And I'm just so proud of you, Makita, for, for being here today. So any questions from the board?
Board members, any questions, discussion?
No, I think this is a great idea and I appreciate you for bringing this because the last time, I think I was the only board member that didn't appreciate what happened at that school. So I think this is a great use of facility and I think the program will grow. I think this is going to cost money, though. And hopefully we can write grants or the school district will be behind it 100% because I think this is better than the last option that was presented to us to grow the school. I think this is the opportunity that we should take, even if it costs us extra money, that we have to support it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I see no reason to be not supportive of this program. I mean, the proximity and her experience just tells me, and the way she presented it today and her passion for it, I, I could see no reason why I wouldn't be supportive today. And, you know, I love the idea and that area of town, we do a summer passport program with the Children's Services and we found that the kids up there are not familiar with the estuaries. They're not familiar with the beach. They don't have exposure out there. And the idea of getting these kids familiar with the lagoon is just so exciting to me because I have seen it in real time. And even with Dr. Mills' kids and their camp, getting them over to the lagoon is an exciting adventure and to explore, explore it more at the elementary level with the resources that we already have in place at Forest Grove and at Westwood is ama, it's a, it's a wonderful idea. And I appreciate you bringing it forward. And, and she already mentioned that the Education Foundation is going to work on some grants. And, and I hope that that is successful. But even if it isn't, I think that we need to get creative and look to our own community to support this. And I will be the first to jump in, jump in on that if we need to at the business community, at the chamber, if it has to be, because I think it's a great idea. And it's one school, so we can make it happen.
Now, this program would be open to any kid in Saint Lucie County. So transportation would be provided, of course, free of charge to attend Francis K. Sweet Magnet MOA school. And I think that's probably a question that parents would be asking, would my, would my child qualify? So can you clarify that a little bit?
Yes, and I just want to reiterate, it's already a magnet school, so that doesn't change.
Right.
We just expect that it will generate more excitement.
But speak to the parent in regards to.
Yes, so absolutely, it, it remains a magnet school with district-wide transportation and access to the program.
Okay, great. And, and as Ms. Aronson was saying, there's kids on where Francis K. Sweet is that have never been to the beach. They've never been to the beach. And there's quite a few of them because of their situations. So it, it would help all the way across the board. And I'm, I'm sure we would be able to raise the population, the student population through the MOA program. My, one of my children went through MOA at Forest Grove and just the exposure itself. He didn't continue as a high school, but he had the opportunity to have that exposure. And so now we would have the opportunity on the elementary school level to have that exposure, which is great. Okay.
Both of my children went through FK Sweet and they have a very long, proud tradition, so I'm very excited. I just want to add, I can never miss an opportunity when we have, when we showcase an elite graduate. Makita was a graduate of our Elite Program, our, our special partnership with FAU for our master's program. And soon we're going to be able to congratulate her because she's busy working on her doctorate and she will soon be Dr. Brom.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I do have a question or some questions. So I, at the moment, FK Sweet is a magnet for academics?
Traditional academics.
Traditional academics, because I remember my children, when they were born, you had to put them on the list. And it's like six years down the road before they became eligible or even on the list. That was how long the list was, six years long. So Mrs. McPherson was the principal, Dr. Perry, yeah, I can, I can name all the principals there at FK Sweet. So as much as I appreciate the, one of the things about MOA, let me, and you're right, there are children in Fort Pierce that has never been to the beach. I found that out and I was really shocked because the beach is like less than five miles on the road. There are kids in Fort Pierce that has never even eaten Chick-fil-A, I mean Chick-fil-A, you know? So there's a lot of things that we need, that needs to happen in the North County. I am not opposed to MOA, but there are things that I, that I, because I found out about MOA on, on Facebook. That's how I found out about MOA. I saw a posting on Facebook about MOA. And so I started to do some research. I started to do some research. And one of the things that came to me was the kids in our, in our inner city, in the inner city. How many of those children are interested in, or what is the, the career potential or possibilities from a MOA program like that? Because MOA, the baby MOA or Discover MOA, whatever, starts at FK Sweet, then we go to Fort Pierce Magnet, that's the pathway, that's the trajectory to Forest Grove. And then we go to Westwood. So that's almost like it's a circle. FK Sweet, Forest Grove, and then it's the same, it's, it's that circle, you know? So it's that same circle. There's no, unless they choose to go outside of it and choose another magnet or whatever, that's the trajectory. And I think that I would have an issue with, with maybe that kind of trajectory as opposed to them being, you know, maybe going to other schools in other districts where they can get other kinds of exposure. Because remember, we were just talking about kids not even going to the beach, have not been exposed. So my thing is for them to have exposure that.
Yes, I think, I think that your question is very clear. The, whenever there's a pathway, you were describing it as a circle, but a pathway, K through 12. When we do an elementary level program, it's, it's school-based, there's themes. It's not locking students into a particular career. And in fact, when we went out and met with Makita and her team, it's, it's really about exploration. It's about science. It's about the pieces of science that apply to all aspects of life, to all aspects of academic. It's more general in elementary. They're going to have experiences. They're going to have field trips. They're not going to be funneled into a particular career. They're not going to be told this is what you have to be. It's going to be exposing them, not at the exclusion of other careers. They're still going to participate in classroom to careers, learn everything about all types of careers. And remember, when you're in a magnet and are an attractor program, you as the parent are choosing that program for your child. Then when they move into middle school, not all of Forest Grove is MOA. It's a program within MOA. It's a program that draws students that are not zoned for Forest Grove. That, that is also a countywide program. That particular program is for students who are interested in the sciences. And many, but not all of them, are interested in marine biology, the marine sciences. That's their interest. And we put that program together, I was here as part of that program. We put that together to generate interest in the program for high school and to let students who are already showing that interest get a taste of it before high school. The high school program, though, is a little bit, it's an advanced attractor program. It is, the coursework is a college-level coursework. They are working with college and university professors at FAU as part, learning about the research. And many of those students are interested in going to FAU's marine biology program or other marine biology programs. Or they're interested in other fields of science, but not all. There are some students there who also go over to Westwood and take other career programs because they were interested in the small, unique environment that MOA provides on a separate campus. So there's lots of different motivations for why students choose programs. And nothing about Makita's program is designed to force them into that career field. It is about exposure and experience, and it is a choice program.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, we already have two schools that have emphasis on environment. We have Village Green Environmental that we brought in, that we've paired up with the Garden Society of Port St. Lucie and they come in and help with the children. We have Rivers Edge Elementary that also does environmental studies going on Oxbow. And it's important to have, to have these kind of activities because you can be playing, those that want to go for recess can go play recess while others can go do nature walk with a teacher and learn. It builds a relationship with the teacher, but also it creates a culture in the school where the kids can use this as a field trip for PBIS. And it creates a different dynamic in the school, particularly when one school has struggled for years and, and being able to bring fresh blood, fresh, fresh, a new sense of, of, of going out in the community. I mean, Fair Lawn goes to, to, to IRCC all the time and to, to, to the firehouse. This is a great opportunity and let's, don't waste it. This is awesome.
Um, thank you. I was going to Village Green because I, I, I wasn't finished, but so, but so I was getting to Village Green. But I wanted to make sure that we were on the same page when it came to that trajectory, that trajectory, that it was not just a path that we, we, the, the proximity that we're keeping, you know, the same children in the same environment, you know? I wanted to make sure that that was not the, the, the ideology behind this. And yes, Village Green with their environmental studies, they grow in the foods, which is what you do. Home Depot did that thing with, with the plants at your school. But this is something that I, I was very surprised by this today because I was not expecting this. So, I did not come with my information. But I would like to, I'd like to get some more information on this. Because this is not, when I spoke to some people, some of the community, the residents, this was not their take on that trajectory. So, I needed to get some more info, I need to get some more information so that I can understand this, and thank you for that. Understand this a little bit better, you know, so that when I go out there, it's with understanding. Remember I tell you, understanding and knowledge. So, I do do my research.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any more discussion comments? Okay, Dr. Prince, at this time, we'd like to take a five-minute break and stretch our legs and be able to do some other things. In five minutes, we will be back to resume the board meeting. Board meeting back up at this time.
All right, at this time, I'd like to announce our wonderful Chief of School, Dr. Craig Summer, who's going to give us kind of a mid-year temperature check on how the school district is doing from an academic end and some of the metrics that we measure.
Thank you, Dr. Prince, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Ingersoll, and School Board. Happy to be here today. I'm going to start off the day on goal number three, increasing acceleration opportunities for all students. And it's all about, as we heard earlier today, opportunity access for all of our students. When we look at our educational arc, specifically zeroing in on accelerated opportunities, our students start, excuse me, in elementary school with the AMP program, the Accelerated Math program. That's their first opportunity. That accelerates students in their instruction in mathematics. And by the time they're in fifth grade, they're taking middle school math, sixth grade, which enables them in middle school to then enroll in algebra and geometry. And then in high school, to take college-level courses, ACE, AP, IB, and dual enrollment, all leading towards post-secondary opportunities and scholarships, which we heard about today. That is our goal, to get our students ready for the workplace, college, beyond, and all of the above. So, when we look at our acceleration in district enrollment, I'm going to talk some numbers now for the next few slides. First, I want to orientate you to the top where you see the 3191. That was our enrollment in the 2014-2015 school year, our district enrollment. That enrollment increased to the 2122 school year to 42,847.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
I said I wasn't going to do this, but I'm going to do this.
I'm shocked.
You were waiting for it, right? The reason I wanted to start at that point here is I mentioned my predecessor, Mr. Gent, earlier. And his entry point was 1415. I was the deputy at the time. And, you know, whenever we instituted, we did institute a lot of change at the district. And I always say about the, you know, I wasn't the primary decision-maker. I can say that the relationship has always been collaborative, and I have a very collaborative style. But, you know, we came a long way. Dr. Mills always likes to say, "Look at how far we've come." So, I wanted to say real quick that this is important because I look at these metrics as, okay, 1415 was the entry point of a culture change. And then 2122 was when I was appointed superintendent in '22. And then I'm the primary decision-maker. And we've established a culture here, a great team. And you'll see an acceleration of the work that we're doing, just the acceleration. So, I wanted you, because the next few slides are really, really important when we're talking about access for students and opportunity for students. Go ahead, Craig.
No, and to your point, Dr. Prince, that, over that 10-year period, that represents a 22% increase in district enrollment. On the bottom, you see some bar charts, okay? And I'll point your attention with the red that shows that in 2014-15, we had 2,635 students that were getting access to one of those accelerated opportunities that I discussed, in elementary, middle, or high school. That then increased to 5,415 over that seven-year period. And then in the last two years, you see we've increased from 5,415 to 8833. That represents a 235% increase in the number of students receiving opportunities for acceleration. When you chart that out on the next screen, you see the unique difference. And if those trajectories moved at the same path, the orange represents our acceleration enrollment, the blue represents our overall district enrollment, they would be even. The gap just shows the significantly increased opportunities that we're providing our students from the 2014-15 year to the 10-year. And nearly half of that has come in the last two school years.
Craig, real quick, can you define acceleration? I just want to make sure the board completely understands what we're talking about.
I'll go back just a couple of slides. So, really, we're defining the acceleration in elementary school by students that get access to the AMP program or the Accelerated Math. Again, that's instruction that pushes them up grade levels in mathematics. In middle school, getting access to algebra and/or geometry. And then in high school, getting access to one of the college-level courses, ACE, AP, IB, or dual enrollment.
So, middle school kids taking high school classes, high school kids getting college credit.
Correct, sir. All leading to your post-secondary opportunities and scholarships. Because as we have discussed in prior workshops, we know that students that get access to the elementary AMP and the middle school mathematics are better suited for the high school programs as well as opportunities for bright futures, as well as other scholarships. So, when we dig into this data a little bit more on the next slide, we see the gap. But when we break it down by student group, we see significant increases. I'll start you with the top-left box. You see our black students. And our district enrollment for black students over the last 10 years has actually increased by 38% in terms of pure enrollment. However, our access to accelerated coursework has increased in that student subgroup by 404%. I'll keep going clockwise to the right. Our Hispanic student population has increased by 54%. Our number of students taking accelerated coursework has increased by 296%. Down clockwise to white students, our white subgroup has actually decreased by 20% in overall enrollment. However, the number of white students taking accelerated courses has increased by 116%. Going around to other, that would be any students that don't fit into the previous three categories, we're up 62%, and their access is 120. And what this shows is that we've leveled the playing field because the groups that had the biggest increases had the lowest proportional enrollment. And that, each of those graphs represent the last 10 years. Okay, I'll keep moving along. This is the 2324 goals. However, we wanted to highlight what was last year's goal number one. Although it is not a goal listed in this year's 2425 superintendent goals, it remains a focus for us, and I'm going to give you a couple of slides for a brief update, comparing semester one of this year to semester one of last year. So, let's do some attendance updates, which then lead us to the third thing I'll talk about, which is academic data. But we know if we don't have the kids in school, they cannot learn. So, how are we doing this year? Well, comparing semester one this year to semester one last year is what we're looking at by school type. So, I'll orientate you to the chart in the top left. You see school-type elementary. We have a slight increase of 0.6%. Kades, 0.8. Middle school, up 1%. High school up a half. Alternative up 5 for an overall increase from 91% to 92%. Now, I know we think sometimes about a 1% increase in attendance, but I always like to say it's a decrease in absenteeism by about 10%, which is huge. So, instead of having 9% of our kids absent each and every school day, that's the daily average, we've decreased that to 8. Putting mathematics to that, you see the highlighted number. That equates, that 1% equates to about 350 additional students per day this year in semester one, the first half of the year, from August to December, that are now attending that were not last year. That's 2,200 hours of instruction. And if you look to the far right, we've had some real significant increases. Performance-based, Fort Pierce-Westwood, Forest Grove, significant improvements from last year. If you put that to a two-year span, including last year, which again, that was our number-one objective, we've increased that number by over 2%, which is 1,000 students per day this year versus two years ago that are attending, that were not attending last year. And you see the significant increases on the right-hand side. Forest Grove Middle over the last two years has increased their attendance rate by almost 9%. That's actually decreased through absenteeism, if you look at it the opposite way, by almost 40%. They were about 85%, they're sitting in the mid-90s now in terms of daily attendance. That is significant, and that's not by accident. And we hope today, by the end of the day, you realize that the work is all intentional, okay? So, those are two brief updates for you. You can see the other successes. St. Lucie West Centennial, Dale Cassin, St. Lucie L., Treasure Coast, all up significantly. Okay? I'll move to my third data point that we're going to talk about. This one, we'll dig into a little bit more, is goal number two. And back to this year's goals, continuing improvement in reading and math across all grade levels. Okay, so just a little bit of vocabulary and some acronyms before we start. Our state assessment is now called the FAST. And starting in 2023, so we're actually in year three of the FAST. I have, I remember when it used to be called the FCAT. That was our state assessment. Then it was the FSA. Now it's the FAST. Why? Because we have new standards. And if you look in the paragraph, you'll see at the second-to-last line, the FAST is based on the best standards, which is the benchmarks of excellent student thinking, okay? So, today, we'll be referring to FAST data. And some more terminology, when we look at the FAST data, we're actually assessed three times per year now with the FAST. And I highlight the middle one, PM, or PM2. At the bottom, I define what PM stands for, that's progress monitoring. If you notice, you see three PMs there, you see PM1. And the purpose of that is the baseline. And the window is from August to September. We, our students are assessed in the beginning of the year. And right now, in the red, in just a moment, I'll be breaking down how we did in the mid-year. Okay, it's called PM2 or Progress Monitoring 2. That window is just about closed. They extended it a couple of days. I believe we're finally closed. And if you want to see what, what does that test look like? Well, in both PM1 or Progress Monitoring 1 in the beginning of the year and the mid-year, it's in reading and math, and it's a 90-minute reading test and an 80- to 100-minute math test, about 35 to 40 questions. The last thing I'll say is, at the end of the year, we will take PM3. That's called, that's the summative. Back in the FCAT and FSA days, that was the test, which we still take, okay? So, just to level set you on that. And the last thing I'll mention is the levels, okay? If you notice, we have five levels, and I highlight levels 3 through 5. Because when we talk about students as being proficient and non-proficient, levels 3 through 5, which is technically defined as grade level is level 3, proficient is level 4, and exemplary is level 5. When you see this data, and we say level 3 and above, we're referring to students in levels 3, 4, and 5. Below grade level will be students that score on levels 1 and 2. After each assessment, students are placed or assigned an achievement level, okay? So, that's my vocabulary for the day. Let's take a look at the results. So, we're going to look at, and we want to frame our brains around this, Progress Monitoring 2, or PM2, which is the mid-year for reading and math. And we're going to look at how we did this year versus last year, okay? So, I can orientate you to this slide. And this is the St. Lucie FAST ELA, also known as English Language Arts. And we want to see how many of our kids scored levels 3 through 5. So, if I can orientate you to the top-left, it says grade. And then just above that, it says 3. It shows that our grade level 3 students, okay? And you see the 34%? That was last year's level 3 and above on PM2. This year, we're at 34%, and we see a plus-minus of 0. That's St. Lucie County. Last year, 34. This year, 34. Since we're comparing this year to last, no change, so that's why you see the 0. If you keep going across that top row, it's the state of Florida last year and the state of Florida this year. And by the way, they're unchanged as well. If you look at fourth grade as one more example, before I give you a second to go through the grade levels. And I have a little yellow checkbox because that means that our change from this year to last was the same as the state of Florida. If I look at grade level 4, you see last year, we were 34% of our students scored at level 3 or above. This year, we're at 39% in grade 4. That gives us a 5% increase. Last year, the state was 41. This year, they're 43, that's a plus 2. That gives us a blue checkbox. That means that our improvement from this year compared to last exceeded that of the state of Florida. Give you just a second to take that in. And of course, if you have any questions. So, each grade level that's assessed, and it's also, as you're looking at, it's important to note that these assessments test the entire year's worth of standards, as if the student had received a full year of instruction.
And I wanted just to pause real quick. You know, our kindergarten readiness is in the bottom third in the state. What I'd like the board to take a look at a little bit is how close, as students progress from grade 3 to grade 10, how far we are from the state. Our proficiency is at 34, theirs at 40, that's a 6% gap. As the students are moving, because we're moving with our learning gains, our below-proficient students, as they move through 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th grade, you start to see our proficiency is identical to the state. And we've, you know, in the history of the district, we've always lagged significantly behind the state in our proficiency. And we are closing the gap to where we're almost identical with the state by the time the students get to high school.
And you see that when it comes to grade 6. An interesting point is that we've talked about the increased number of students taking the AMP program. And in math, just remember that, is that as our kids, you know, receive accelerated opportunities and they get to middle school, they're showing higher levels of proficiency. Look at those increases this year to last. Our 6th graders were 40% last year. They're actually at 49 this year, which is a plus 9. Our 7th graders were at 34 last year, they're now at 43. That's a plus 9. And then 8th grade's a plus 3, 9th is a plus 5, 10th is a plus 6. Each of those, blue means that we are increased from this year to last beat the state's increase, which means we are shrinking the gap when it comes to proficiency. Yellow just means that we've matched the state. So, you can see that in seven of the eight grade levels, we've either matched or exceeded the state improvement in proficiency in reading. And then when you dig into the schools that really moved well, we've had significant increases in schools and grade levels, and we highlight those. So, as an example, Alapata Flats, their 4th and 7th grade, had at least a 10% or more increase in a reading proficiency on this, on this mid-year assessment on the PM2. And you can continue looking at all the names, Bay Shore, C.A. Moore, Dale Cassin, Dan McCarty. We've alphabetized that, all the way over at the bottom to Treasure Coast. So, I'll give you just a second to see our successes. That's one year to the next, 10% or more. And in some of these schools that have, a high school that has 700 students in a grade level, that means that at least 70 more students are at proficiency in the middle of the year. It's a great sign. Because of course, there's excellent correlation between the mid-year and the summative at the end of the year. So, we can pivot to math, and let's see how we did in mathematics in our mid-year, on our PM2. Mathematics tells a very positive story as well. It reads the same way. Grade 3, we were at 29 last year. We do see a slight dip to 25, which is a minus 4, but the state as well, went from 31 to 29. In 4th grade, we see last year we were at 16, this year at 18. You see an increase of 2%. Slight dip in 5th. And then you see in middle school, we have significant increases. I'll give you a second to look at those. And you're noticing that in four of the six grade levels that are tested in mathematics, our increase either matches or exceeds the state of Florida, which shows that we are shrinking the gap when it comes to proficiency in mathematics. And it's going to be really telling for the next couple of months, between the baseline that was just completed and May, because there's typically a lot of movement in math in the springtime. So, we're very, we feel very confident about that. And actually, this year, all of our schools tested what we would consider early in the window. Some of the schools across the state, because the window's so large, tested later than us. So, they had more time for instruction during the mid-year, so we feel good about that. Is that we have a lot of instruction because we tested relatively early. And as you're looking at that, we'll just celebrate some of the schools that did extremely well. This is the same highlight where we've got a 10% or greater growth at a specific school or grade level. So, as an example, Cast Creative Arts, their 8th grade, was 10% or higher in terms of their improvement from this year to last. You notice Dan McCarty again. Dan McCarty was listed in also reading, so they're having an excellent year so far. We want to encourage them in the great work they're doing. Fair Lawn, Floresta, Forest Grove, and so on. I'll give you just a moment to look at those schools that we highlight with major increases from this year. to look at those schools that we highlight with major increases from this year to last. I told you this would be a lot of fun. Here's the, here's the good news. When we composite all those scores up, and we see our increases, I'll orientate you to the top of this slide. You see SLPS, and then each number represents the grade level. And then we put in the increase for ELA in math, for both reading and math. And when we add those up, in ELA grades three through ten, and math grades three through eight, we are a plus forty-eight in terms of the proficiency this year to last and the improvements. So our overall improvements add up to a plus forty-eight in each of those areas. At the bottom of the slide, you see the state of Florida. Their increase was a plus twenty-five in both reading and math. We're very proud of that, because that's essentially a two-to-one increase, which shows that we are on track to outpace the growth of the rest of the state and improve our district grade.
And I wanted to just say something on this slide. This is really an oversimplification, but in my years of experience, this is what I use and kind of brought with me, okay, are you going to have a good year or a bad year? I mean, it's really a simple, you know, process. If you're moving students faster than the state, you're going to have a good year. If you're even with the state, you're going to have a ho-hum year. And if you're moving students less than the state, it's going to be a rough year. Last year was probably the most successful academic year we've had in the history of the district. We're less than one percent of points away, and we're talking a twelve-hundred-point system away from being an A-rated district. This is very optimistic for us, because right now, if we finish like this, we're going to have a really, really strong year. But it's not how you start. It's not in the middle. It's how you finish. So I want to just say real quickly, I cannot think enough, my team and the collaboration between teaching and learning, our chief of schools, and also the executive directors of schools, and we have four of them. You stand up, please, the ones that are here.
Two of them are at performance meetings.
Yes. We're doing our performance meetings right now, where we're going through the process. And by the way, spoiler alert, you're about to see what that looks like. But we have such good seamless collaboration about support, how to support our schools, and where we get targeted support. And that is really critical as we go into the spring before testing. So it's looking really good for us, but we've got to seal the deal. Craig?
Yeah. Looking at that visually, you notice the blue box on the left. If you put all of our reading scores together and compare this year to last, we're, our overall, we're up five percent from last year's midpoint to this year's midpoint. And then what you see to the right are the visuals by grade levels, the same data that you just saw in the charts. We're just showing them visually. And I'll give you a second to see that. And of course, if we do see a grade level that's not moving, that's, as Dr. Prince said, that's strategy for us to deploy resources, which you'll hear about in just a moment, and we'll expand on. Then looking at math, overall, we're up two percent this year compared to last. And this is the same data that you saw just a moment ago in the charts. And just, you know, we really want to celebrate sixth and eighth grades in mathematics, because as we mentioned AMP, if you remember, kids that are in fifth grade actually take the sixth-grade test. So when you see that plus-six in sixth grade, that number also includes our fifth graders that are accelerated. So we're very proud of that. The same thing with eighth grade. In fact, the seventh grade, which has a small increase, is our smallest number of kids. Kids technically skip, a lot of them skip, the seventh-grade test. So the plus-eight is huge for us as well in eighth grade, because that's a large number of our students. This talks about the grade level of the test the kids take, not what they're enrolled in. So when we see pluses in sixth and eighth, it shows us how well our acceleration's working at the elementary level to get kids to that sixth-grade point. Some of them are still in elementary school. And then the eighth-grade plus-eight shows how great our acceleration's working in middle school, because a lot of the kids take that test early. Some kids take the eighth-grade test in sixth grade, as they've been on the accelerated track. So the plus-eight and the plus-six are huge for us. And you'll hear more about that as final results come out at the end of the year. But we did want to share with you guys a brief video. This is about four minutes long, and the title is Monitoring What Matters. It just kind of goes through the process, as Dr. Prince said, of how our departments collaborate, our teaching and learning, as well as our executive directors, to make sure that all these data points are monitored and decisions are made based on that. So we figured the visual would work for you. It's about four minutes. So sit back and enjoy.
Hello. I'm Craig Summer, Chief of Schools for St. Lucie Public Schools. I'm excited to share with you today our progress and plan towards improving student outcomes. As we reach the mid-year point, we take a moment to reflect on the progress that we've made and where we are in relation to our superintendent's goals. One of our primary objectives this year is superintendent goal number two, continue improvement in reading and math across all grade levels. Today, I want to walk you through how our monitoring systems support this goal and ensure that we stay on track.
Our executive directors play a crucial role in this process. Each one oversees a portfolio of schools, and their work focuses on four main areas: developing collaborative learning teams, mentoring and coaching principals, monitoring instruction, and addressing any district initiatives or school-specific needs.
And if you look at it, it's a quick, brief data analysis. Where are we? Where were we? Where do we want to go?
Every week, our executive directors facilitate collaborative learning teams, or CLPs, where principals and their leadership teams engage in data-driven discussions. The goal is not just to train and build principals, but to ensure that those strategies are communicated and implemented effectively within each school.
Have a conversation about what good centers would look like.
Yeah. So how do we implement rules? Some of the opportunities, like the student talk and the two.
Each week, I send out a data-focused email to guide these CLPs, making sure the discussions align with timely, relevant priorities. This creates a cadence for monitoring that keeps us aligned with our district goals, ensuring that every decision we make is driven by data and focused on student outcomes.
In addition to the weekly CLPs, our professional development is directly informed by the feedback from these sessions and our instructional walks. Every month, we align training for principals, assistant principals, and deans to the feedback we gather, ensuring consistency and targeted support across all leadership levels. Twice a year, we hold performance meetings, where we walk classrooms and assess each school's progress. These meetings are an opportunity to review the data and see firsthand how instructional practices are aligned with the state standards and our district goals.
For background knowledge to determine the meaning of multiple screening and unknown words and phrases appropriate to your grade level.
So what is that telling us that we need to do?
To believe.
To believe in ourselves.
After each performance meeting, our executive directors prepare a summary of key findings, which includes action plans for improvement. These summaries are shared with the superintendent and the cabinet, helping us identify strength and opportunities for growth. It's a crucial part of our approach to ensure continuous improvement and to provide targeted support where it's needed most.
Fifty percent of our level-two students pass by all reason. Now, what if you've got a quality teacher that you're putting your level-two students with? I mean, you can really make huge gains.
By combining data analysis with classroom observations, we are able to deploy district resources where they are most needed, providing tiered support to schools based on their individual needs.
Our goal is to provide a thoughtful, systemic approach to improving student outcomes, one that is both proactive and intentional. By aligning our monitoring systems with superintendent goal number two, we are making sure that every decision we make, every action we take, contributes to the goal of improving reading and math outcomes for all students in our district. The mission of St. Lucie Public Schools is to ensure all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed.
And then this slide just captures what you previously saw as to where we are in the midpoint this year versus last. Each of our grade levels assessed, overall, reading up five, math up two. And at that point, I hope you enjoyed the video. Open to any Q and A.
Open to any Q and A. Boy, I guess I'll start out then. Okay? I found that very interesting. Very interesting. I thought it was a great breakdown of where our students start at and what's going on in this district. When you first mentioned about kindergarten readiness being so low in the state of Florida, we are extremely low in that area. That means readiness when they come into the school system. Are they ready to start kindergarten? Am I correct? And we find ourselves in a very low place in the state as a county. And yet, in the last so many years since, of what you showed us, from the beginning of what, how many years? We went back? Eight years?
Twenty-fourteen, fifteen. Yeah, ten years.
Okay, ten years. We have steadily been closing the gap, but we start out very low. Our kids come to us in a very low place academically and where they should be at when they first get here. For me, my experience is working with a lot of preschoolers. And the, our community, our preschools, have to do a better job in working with the district to get those children ready. And I don't, it just says, Lam, we're working with EDC. I don't know how we can do it, but we need to. Somehow, we need to get with these preschools and help them get our children ready, training, or whatever we need to do. Because when they come to us, they come to us, we have too many problems trying to get them where we want them. And what I noticed with that presentation was in the elementary school level, we had a harder time getting them where we need them in the reading and the math than when they, but we work with them so diligently to close that gap, that by the time they get to middle school, they're doing better. And then by the time they get to high school, they're doing better. So we're doing an excellent job as a district. But we need our children to come to us more ready, so that we don't start at such, so far behind in closing the gap. But I really do appreciate, and I will say it to the world, I really appreciate what we have done as a district in closing the gap. It doesn't just happen. It takes a lot of hard work, and it takes strategic work that's implemented in order for this to happen. Because before the, ten years ago, we were not doing well. Now, we're in the top in the state, even though we have a way to go.
Just a quick comment, and actually, that might be a subject for a future board workshop about the, what we are doing with our VPK providers. Dr. Mills, because we do, you know, know that that is something that we need to improve on, and we have a number of initiatives that we are undertaking with our VPK providers to provide them support. So we'll put that on the agenda for a future workshop, so that we can make the board aware of what we are doing.
And we may need even, just not the providers, but these agencies that fund these providers. We may need to talk with them too, because they, when the provider's hands are tied in certain areas, you know, like I know when I had my preschools, I couldn't do did-ows with the kids. You know what did-ows are, right? When they come to kindergarten, it's paperwork, you know? And yet, the provider said, I can't do paperwork with the kids. So that causes the kid to go further behind, because when they get to kindergarten, they need to know how to have already been exposed to that, to help them come more kindergarten-ready, see? So we do have a work in that area, Dr. Prince, to look at. Also, what I really appreciated seeing was that the state acceleration, where we've come from there, is absolutely mind-blowing, really. And what I had, what I wanted to ask was, how did we get there in regards to closing the gap in those areas? I mean, when you look at what it was like, and I just want us to be just upfront with it, so that we know the community, how did we get there to close in that gap, where you have so many more minority students being, having the access of having, getting the acceleration program, where they can take more, get more prepared in these math and science, and math and English area? What did you do to cause such a rise among the Hispanic population students, the African-American and Black students?
So I'm lucky to join a team that was really, you know, making great success when I got here. But it's a combination of a number of things. Number one, our dashboards for monitoring student scheduling is extremely strong. We're able to trend out over time by school, by student group, how many students are getting access to programs. So we can quickly determine where are we. Because that's the first step in solving any challenge or decreasing any gap, is to know where are you? What's your current state? And then when it comes to shrinking the difference between where you currently are and where you want to go, it's a matter of applying a number of things, like training for teachers that we provided, and then support along the way. We do, on the secondary level, our executive directors conduct what's called a master schedule analysis every school year, where they sit with the leadership teams, because the principals then reflect as to what courses they're offering, and then how they're providing those courses to students. How is access being given? That's really another part. So it's training, a process in place, and using data to determine where your weaknesses are. And that's a slow and steady, and it's really the culture that, you know, Dr. Prince has built, and then we've enhanced in the last couple of years, to where you're not, truly, as a former principal, you want to be able to be told, it's, you have to try new things. It's okay to make mistakes along the way and take chances and risks, which we don't, by the way, think are risks, because the data supports that when students get access, their academic achievement increases as well. You see, the two things are going hand in hand. The more access kids get, the higher their test scores are. But it's work to get the teachers prepared and get the students in the class, and then make it clear to parents what the message is going to be. So working with that community is the last part, to say, we're giving your kid this opportunity, and here's the supports they may or may not need. So it's those three things at that.
I also wanted to add to, Dr. Mills, kids at home, all children are capable of success, no exceptions. And do you really live that? And do you believe it? I mean, that's the question I would ask our principals, that I would ask our teachers, our support staffs, because that is our philosophy, and we're going to live that philosophy. And that starts at the top with the culture that we create and the culture of expectations for kids, but also a belief in kids, that all children are capable of success. So I call it kind of a self-actualization, that that belief wasn't always there, although people can say things. Saying and doing are two different things. You know, we're going to make sure that our opportunities and our actions are a reflection of our philosophy. And I think that you're seeing that with where we are today, that the enrollments in our accelerated programs are identical to the enrollments that are sitting in our schools right now. They mirror each other, and that wasn't always the case, but they do now.
Where are we as a district in the state, among the state with acceleration programs? Where are we?
So the state metric on acceleration is a little different. We consider, we actually hold ourselves to a higher standard than the state. But we're, I want to say, I want to say, last year, we were number twelve. Hasn't fully been released yet. But out of sixty-seven districts, we're in the top twenty percent. We expect that to improve in the near future. That's on the high school acceleration rate. And as you know, graduation rate, we're in the top ten. We're number nine out of sixty-seven districts.
And we improved our acceleration. Those numbers are released whenever they release the graduation rate, but we're not able to see how the other districts perform. But we improved substantially. I anticipate we'll be in the top ten, possibly the top five.
Correct.
So we have certainly shrunk the gap. And as long as we're doing that, we have, like you said, we have a great year. Being consistent in shrinking the gap, because that takes time, and it takes a lot of work.
Yep.
And a lot of effort. And as long as we can see that we are moving forward and we're shrinking it, we know that we're going in the right direction and we're doing well.
And I just got to, oh, sorry.
Dr. Mills, there is no gap. There is no gap right now. That is gone. The question is, you know, right now, we're sitting at about fifteen percent of our students are currently enrolled in accelerated courses. We'd like to see, as we continue to improve, you know, thirty to thirty-five percent of our students enrolled in taking these courses. in taking these courses. But that 15% representation, there is no gap between our white Hispanic and Black students.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, in my head, I was thinking more so the gap
Achievement.
With the achievement. I already know there's no gap there where you're talking acceleration. We've closed that. In my head, I'm looking at the gap that we still have versus the state to get up to where the state is.
And I just have to say one thing, I'd be, just shout out to Denise Rodriguez, OTL, and, and their teacher training and leading with Lisa Slover, because they've built a lot of that culture with our teachers to be able to take those risks. So I'd just be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to that department and our teachers, because they're, they're, they're carrying the heavy lift every day in the classroom, and they're doing a fantastic job shrinking those gaps.
Yeah, we saw that. We see that. We realize that. So I just want to make that clear. That's the gap I'm talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the 15% is in elementary. High school's significantly higher in terms of the percentage of kids. Just throwing that out.
Yes. Board members, anyone want to say anything, discuss?
I have, you have a question? I have a question. So in terms of the kids that are not, that are coming in, the, the pre-kindergartners that are not ready, have we identified the area, what, where, what, where those kids are, what area they are in so that we can effectively help them?
Yeah, do you mean geographical area or, oh, yeah, standards? Yes, a lot of that work has gone in, and if you remember, it's been an identified area of need for us in really the K through three. So if you remember the board workshop, you saw a couple of months ago, Heather Belitho and Liz Pro with Denise's team with the U Fly implementation has really been one of our new interventions to, because if you're seeing the data that we saw, third grade's a little weak, well, the real simple answer, it's not easy, but it's simple, if you could just increase proficiency in kids in third grade, it'll trickle down to every single grade level. Well, how do you do that? You've got to put the fix in place. So the answer, the short answer is yes, and we have the fix to it, which is the U Fly implementation. And I think that was workshopped back in, I want to say, October, to address those needs.
And I'm talking about the kindergartners, the pre-kindergartners.
Oh, which pre-K?
What, what, what is, where, where are they coming?
Physically located?
Yes.
To, to give you that specific, we'd have to probably loop back to give you the, make sure we gave you the exact, but it's to Dr. Prince's point, that might be something that he would look to workshop if the board should request that.
So that we are targeting that, those areas, those, that people, those peoples or whatever, you know, so that when they come in, you know, you know, they are, they're ready.
It's intuitive. It's intuitive. It makes total sense.
Yeah. And, and in terms of the, the B and A district, and you know, B and A district, it's not just, we're not just talking about reading and math.
Sure.
Are we, we have all of these different cells or, or columns.
Yes, 12.
Twelve of them that put together to decide whether or not it's an, the district, it's an A district.
Correct.
So even if we are, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my, when we, when I started on the board and we started with this, I just assumed that we were talking about math and English, that if we get up to a certain place, that, you know, we're an A district or science or whatever. But it's not just math and English and science and civics and whatever. It's, it's a lot other, there are other columns that includes our graduation rate and, or learning gains and all of these other things that put together for us to be, or for the district to be an A district.
Yes, ma'am.
So even if you're not proficient or if you're not where you need to be in reading and math, or as long as you're proficient or in other areas, you're still, you'll still gain that letter.
Yes, ma'am. And it's, our focus on reading and math is number one, it's, hasn't been our strongest points, the proficiency, and we want to increase that. And it is, 700 of the 1,200 points are directly related to reading and math, both getting to proficiency and making gains. And of course, it's also the graduation requirements. You've got to pass a reading test, you've got to pass a math test. So that's, and that's our area that we want to grow in.
Well, that's the, I just want to make sure that we, that I understood that, that it's not just the reading and math, because that's what we're talking about today.
You are correct.
But we are talking about also being an A district, but it's not, it's not that simple. Well, it is that simple. If we are proficient in other areas, then we still can earn that letter.
It's an excellent point. The, the progress monitorings that we're sharing, the only progress monitorings the students take are in reading and math, which is why we shared that.
Right, I get that. I get that, but I just want to make sure that we understand that those are not the criteria, that's not the, on the criteria, that there are other criterias that makes a district an A district.
I understand. Thank you.
That was it for me.
Thank you so much. That presentation was excellent, Dr. Summers.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we thank you for all you do to help others to get where they, we all need to be at. Your skills is extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, board.
Dr. Prince?
That concludes our, our agenda for the day. I just once again provided the board members with the schedule of all the board meetings. The only decision point that Jen Lincoln is going to be sending out is on November 4th or November 18th, as to which day to have a regular board meeting, because November 11th is Veterans Day. So she'll be pulling, you know, just sending that out to the board to make sure that those dates work. But that concludes our formal presentations.
Board members, are all minds clear at this time? Meeting adjourned.